Okay, I would like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker, Mr. Sizmar, Mr. Cummings.
Here.
Ms. Gloss.
Here.
Mrs. Herrick.
Here.
Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Winston.
Here.
And President Lacks.
Here, we have a quorum. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to The Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News Tribune, the Alternatives Press of East Brunswick, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotaped meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening to my diehard fans. But as promised, we are going to see you in an hour because I'm going to call for a motion for closed session, whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting, and these subjects are within the exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act and are permitted to be discussed in closed session. The Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, those items listed on tonight's agenda. The length of closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the Board shall reconvene and action will be taken. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education will recess into closed session for only the aforementioned subjects, and be it further resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education hereby declares that its discussion of the aforementioned subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Moved by Mrs. Becker, seconded by Mr. Winston. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion carries. See you in an hour. Okay, welcome back. We are going to start back up again with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Lacks. Good evening, everyone. The artwork on display in the boardroom this evening was created by students from Churchill Junior High School. The art teachers of these talented students are Darren Amy, Deborah Manzuno, Leah LeFever, Carolyn Spooner, and Kimberly Valdado. Matthew Haddis is the principal. Students at Frost participated in the Great Kindness Challenge by doing various activities to promote the power of kindness during the week of January 29th. Frost students were crazy for kindness that included Crazy Hair and Hat Day, created cards for the Sunrise Assisted Living Facility, worked collaboratively during their buddy activity, and collected coins for kindness for students in Kenya. The students are learning the importance of kindness and will continue these acts throughout the school year. I had the pleasure of attending the National Honor Society Induction Ceremony on Tuesday, February 6th, where 87 students were inducted in the East, or at the East Brunswick High School. Students were inducted in this program due to their demonstration of scholarship service, leadership, and character. A student qualifies to join this organization through their GPA but is accepted based on their application, which includes a lot more than just grades. Students and families gathered for the ceremony and enjoyed light refreshments afterward. On Wednesday, February 7th, the Hammer Shoal Technology Teachers hosted their first-ever Tech Night, a night filled with beginner block-based coding and an opportunity to control robots in real-time via the CodeJoy platform. The night was well-received by almost 100 coders and parents who attended. The Hughes tech team is already looking to plan more events that create exciting STEM opportunities for our students. I also had the pleasure of attending Irwin's 100th Day of School Celebration. First graders from Irwin School sang songs, played instruments, made their own math problems, and dreamed about what they would do with 100 somethings. Each student drew an original art piece and told the audience about their favorite 100 facts or dreams. And I found it interesting. One student looked at it from a completely different perspective. He said he did not want 100 snakes.
Can't blame him.
The festivities were well-attended by appreciative parents, and students were happy to celebrate this important milestone in elementary school. Through a grant provided by the East Brunswick Education Foundation, Warren Storffer will be visited by six different professional groups performing traditional music from around the world. So far, the students have experienced performances by the following: Suna, who used East African instruments, as well as Taikosa, who gave a performance on traditional Japanese drums. So, six more artists to come there. In sports, Vito Trupiana signed a national letter of intent to play football at Wagner College. Middle-school wrestler Sean Riley won the Monmouth Middlesex and Tri-County Championships in the 128-pound weight class for Churchill. And varsity cheer took first place at the JFK competition and also the grand champion at the St. John Vienni Competition this past weekend. So congratulations to all of them. On Friday, February 2nd, the district held a Denim Day for American Heart Association and National Go Red Day. A total of $2,245 was collected. On March 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 8th, and 9th, the East Brunswick High School Drama Club will be presenting The Lightning Thief, this dynamic musical adaptation of Rick Riordan's bestselling book opened on Broadway in 2019. When teenager Percy Jackson discovers he's a demigod, he and his friends embark on an epic journey to find Zeus's missing lightning bolt and prevent a war among the gods. Tickets can be purchased at ebhsdrama.org. On February 28th and 29th, the Hughes Drama Club will be presenting Frozen Kids. You'll love this fanciful and heartwarming stage adaptation of the celebrated animated film. Join Anna, Elsa, Olaf, Sven, and all of your favorite characters as they embark on an epic ice-filled journey of self-discovery, camaraderie, and the real meaning of true love. Tickets can be purchased at Hughes, H-U-E-S dot booktix, that's B-O-K-T-I-X dot net. I would like again to remind the community that school unfortunately will be open on Monday, February 19th, as indicated on our school calendar because of the inclement weather days we've had to take this year. That's all we have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The moment you've all been waiting for, our budget presentations. Bernie's going to kick them off for us. And let us know what we have in store.
Good evening. We are at the beginning of that time of year with budget development. Well, not at the beginning of that process. We've actually begun that in the late fall. But we're at the beginning of the presentation and review process. So I wanted to go over a few things before we get into a couple of the departments that will be discussing their budgets this evening. First, talk a little bit about the budget development process. First of all, at the school level, it is based on projected enrollment. We take a look at what the per pupil costs have been on a historical basis, and the school budgets are there to support day-to-day school needs. It's strictly day-to-day school needs. Then at the department level, when I talk about department level, that would be academics, it would be athletics, facilities, transportation, student services, and so forth, special education. At the department level, we utilize what would be called a modified zero-base budgeting. That process would be looking at the prior year's budget, making reductions to that prior year's budget for anything that was a request or should be looked at from a zero base, meaning start anew, reanalyze, recalculate, and then move forward from there. One of the other aspects that's taken into consideration through the budget process is class size. And this is particularly important in the elementary schools, looking at what those projected enrollments are, how many sections are required at each of those levels, and assessing whether those class sizes require additional sections or whether a section can be realigned or even reduced. But to maintain within the thresholds that have been established by policy and also by utilizing what the square footage actually is for the classrooms. And then, of course, salaries. The collective bargaining agreements play an important role, looking at what those bargaining agreements require in terms of salary adjustments moving forward for the existing staff and also for any new staff that might be added into the budget due to need. Now, I need to point out some things. We are, I am anticipating various challenges, and I don't know what the bottom line on these are, but we are looking at this and will certainly be discussing these in the weeks ahead. First of all, staffing. In the current year, we have had to approve, the Board has had to approve, a number of positions that were not budgeted but were subsequently required due to legal compliance. That was an absolute necessity during the course of the year. It's unavoidable. It has happened in other years as well. But I want to make sure that that is something that the Board and the public is cognizant of. We also have a number of position requests for next year. We haven't had the opportunity to delve into the totality of what those would be at this time, and also that needs to be taken into consideration with what the overall bottom line is with the budget. Certainly, student mental health services. We have seen and certainly had discussions at Board level, but student mental health services are in increasing need throughout the district. So there's definitely going to be an impact in terms of providing those services and what the cost would be. Teacher shortages and absences have had a significant impact on the cost of substitute teachers. That will certainly have an impact on the budget. We've had issues that we've had to contend with in the current year. We had similar issues last year. So from a historical perspective, I'm anticipating that we are going to need to budget appropriately for those. Contracted transportation services, that is nothing new. We've had this conversation year after year. It is as difficult today as it was pre-pandemic to hire bus drivers, for the companies to have bus drivers in place. Their rates have gone up quite substantially over the last several years. So that is also a challenging area for us. And contracted services in general, renewals. We are anticipating rate renewals that are going to come in at, probably at rates that are not exactly to our pleasure. When I say not to our pleasure, we have in the past been very successful in negotiating rates where contracted services have agreed to maintain rates and have zero increase. I'm not anticipating that to be the case for this budget cycle. So that'll be something else to keep an eye on. Health benefit rate increases. I've already gotten the initial rate increase information. That is a definite area that will be going up. I hesitate to say by what percentage at this point because I don't have final data, but I can tell you that will be increasing. And I just literally received today workers' compensation insurance rate increases. Without getting into a lot of detail, that is another area. What we don't know is what state aid support we're going to receive at this time. I haven't heard any grumblings out there. We will know in a few weeks where that is. We're hopeful that the state aid amounts will be greater than they were in the current year to help offset these increases. But again, that is an unknown area. And I have on here in terms of maximizing enterprise revenue. I think that is an important aspect for us, and the district has done a very good job of maximizing its revenues over the last several years. We've been recovering since the pandemic in being able to get back to levels or close to levels that we were pre-pandemic. But that's an area that we need to keep an eye on. We need to see what we can do in terms of maximizing those revenues and discuss what opportunities might exist even for the future. If not this budget cycle, the next budget cycle. We do have some ideas that we will be discussing with the Board at a future date. So, having said that, that was a lot of information. I feel like I was almost like a circus barker here. I didn't mean to sound so fast. But it was important to go through these bullet points. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bowley. Dr. Bowley will review the academics budget.
Actually, I'm going to interrupt you for a moment. We're going to go a little out of order. Mrs. Reese brought up a very good point. We have some students here that came to speak to us this evening, and it is a school night. So if you don't mind, Dr. Bowley, I'm actually going to suspend the three remaining presentations.
Absolutely.
And I'm going to go to the.
Understandable. But before I forget, there were a couple of things I forgot.
I'm sorry. I'll let you finish.
Just because I don't want to come back later and talk about these. So where are we in terms of timelines, budget presentations? We have, of course, this evening, March 7th and March 20th. The Governor's Budget Address is slated for February 27th. By law, that is the fourth Tuesday in February. That's when he's required to give the budget address, not when February 27th has to be. And state aid data will be released by law two days after the Governor's Budget Address. The tentative budget must be adopted by March 20th. So that is a Wednesday. So as a reminder to the Board, that Board meeting is on a Wednesday. The public hearing will take place on April 25th, and the final budget adoption will be held on May 9th. And now.
Thank you, Mr. Julian.
To the good of the cause with the students.
Thank you so much.
Very good point, Mrs. Reese.
Yes, 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 yes. I know that you guys were going to be thrilled by the buzz in budget presentations, but just in case, and you have homework, so.
There's a test.
The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. In order to permit the fair and orderly expression of such comment, the Board should provide a period for public comment at every meeting of the Board. A participant will be limited to three minutes duration. A lapse time will be determined through the use of a timing device operated by the Board Secretary. And I do always like to remind the public, it is your time to speak to the Board. Please don't take our silence as not caring about the issues you are raising. Anything that needs follow-up will be directed to the two lovely ladies.
Yeah, there's so many lovely.
There's a lot of lovely ladies, but the two that are sitting on the end. Anything that we need follow-up, we'll make sure that your information is left with them. Contact information, and we will follow up with you. Now, that being said, is there anyone that would like to speak to the Board this evening? If you could come on up. Now, for my students, if you could tell us your name and the grade that you're in, you do not have to give us your home address.
Okay. Hi, my name is Savannah Simeo, and I'm in eighth grade.
Savannah, could you repeat your last name, please?
Savannah Simeo.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Olivia Bracco, and I'm in eighth grade.
Hi, my name is Sydney Hitchens, and I'm also in eighth grade.
Hi, my name is Olivia Bracco, and I'm an eighth-grade student at Churchill Junior High School. Sydney, Savannah, and I have been working to transition the already-existing dance club into a varsity team sport with the goal of competing against other high schools and ultimately earning a varsity letter for the team. The current dance club members are required to have physicals, fundraisers, and follow the protocols of the school like any other varsity athletic team would. They participate in an intense tryout process, survive cuts, and participate extremely hard every week to perform at the school events. The dance club athletes are just that, athletes, and should be recognized as such. Many other schools and especially top universities and colleges recognizes dance as an athletic sport. What we are seeking to add to the already-existing club is more practice time for these athletes to devote to competing for their school and the ability to participate in more formal high school competitions where we can represent the school and town we love. Participation in varsity athletics in high school is the ultimate expression of school spirit. We would like more opportunities to represent our school as we are proud members of the East Brunswick community. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Savannah Simeo, an eighth-grader at Churchill Junior High School. I came here today to inform you the things that we have done as a team to put our goal into action. We put out an initial Google form that we created across multiple platforms. We received our first response in September 2023. The last response was filled out in November 2023. In total, we had 35 people interested. Afterwards, we met with Mr. Malta, the Athletic Director of East Brunswick. He put out a more official form. He received the first response in December 2023. Mr. Malta emailed us an update on January 29th, 2024, saying that we had a total of 147 responses. Then we emailed the ninth-grade assistant principal, Mr. Ivanovich, for permission to hang up flyers that we created. The flyer included a QR code to the Google form Mr. Malta made. Once we had permission, we hung 50 flyers to CJHS. Then we emailed Mr. Malta to see if we were allowed to hang them up at Hammer Shoal Upper Elementary School. When we got the okay, we hung 50 additional flyers at Hughes. As shown, we have taken responsibility to get a varsity dance team. I, along with many others, have a strong passion for dance. As a competitive dancer, I love to dance with my teammates and represent my studio. By bringing a varsity dance team into an East Brunswick school setting, you will be contributing to the happiness of our community. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sydney, and I would like to share with you some of the reasons why we would like to compete on EBHS Dance Team.
Excuse me, Cindy. Your last name? Sydney, I'm sorry. Your last name, please?
Hitchens.
Hitchens, thank you. I won't penalize you all the time.
We won't penalize you when getting her name wrong.
The first reason being is because we and many fellow students would love to have something to participate in at school and to show school spirit. Next, we will promote the physical, next, the dancing will promote the physical and mental well-being of students. The dance team would be a gender-neutral dance team. Being a part of a dance team will also play into academic strengths and will help students learn time management. As honor roll students and competitive dancers, we all excel in our schoolwork. In fact, Olivia was Student of the Month in October. There are many competitive and non-competitive opportunities at regional competitions and national competitions, as well as school sporting events. In addition, it gives students who are looking to pursue a dance career an opportunity to be recognized by programs and competition. There will be many opportunities for students to earn it, to earn dance scholarships to universities and colleges. Lastly, we would love a dance team because it would give students a sense of unity and being a part of a team in a school setting. We have written, we have a written form of our proposal we would like to hand out to you, and we hope you will consider it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Did a great job, girls. If you dance as well as you do public speaking, I think you'll go a long way. And I love the fact that you all talked about being an honor roll, Student of the Month, Scholar, Athletes. Thank you for that. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to speak to the Board? See, you're a tough act to follow. Okay, seeing that, I'm going to close the public portion.
President Lacks, could I just one second?
Yes, please.
If we, if you could communicate with Mrs. Mandler, and could we set up a meeting to talk about this? All right.
Thank you. If you would like to sneak out quietly before the budget presentation. Yes, thank you, Mrs. Reese. Thank you. And now, Dr. Bowley. You get to follow that. Have a good night. I'm going to expect tap dancing. Just kidding, just kidding.
You don't want to see that. Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm happy to present to you the budget for the Department of Academics for the 24-25 school year. Before we get started, I just want to share some context with you. This budget was developed with our refresh cycle in mind, as you see throughout the budget. We have a refresh cycle established for textbooks, for instruments, for equipment, for classroom libraries, to make sure that everything is current, being refreshed in a timely manner. The budget was also created with equity in mind, ensuring that our classrooms, our schools, our various grade levels all have the same provided for the students. And in a manner, if you could just go back, Bernie, one more. And in a manner that ensures that our teachers really have everything that they need to be successful and that the work of each department is moving forward in a fiscally responsible manner. So the budget before you includes curriculum materials, instructional supplies, textbooks, online resources. Next slide, please. For all of the content areas, the curricular areas, arts education, science, social studies, math, language arts, practical arts, and word languages. It also supports other areas such as professional learning opportunities for all district staff, basic skills programming, gifted and talented programming, home instruction for all students in the district, the Flex program that is offered to our students in ninth through 12th grades, our ESL program, staff evaluations for all staff in the district, all district testing, and our instructional coaches. And the last slide here is a visual representation of the budget. You see that science is the biggest chunk. That does include the sixth-grade Fairview Overnight Experience trip. That's funds that not only the trip but the transportation for that as well. So that's a high-level overview of this budget, and I'm happy to answer any detailed questions that you may have.
Any questions from the Board? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bowley.
Thank you for your support. Next on the agenda of presentations and discussion is athletics. Mr. Frank Malta will be reviewing the athletics budget.
Thanks, everyone, and good to be here tonight. I enjoy constructing our budget for our coaches and student athletes. It gives my office an opportunity to help support our coaches, our student athletes. It allows our coaching staff to have input into some of the wants and needs that we, we want to have for our athletic seasons to compete within the GMC and within the state. I take great pride in our athletic budget and providing for our athletes and our coaches. So when I, when we do this in our office, I'm going to highlight a few of the different budget support systems. First is updating some of our banners, our trophy cases, and pictures. You know, one of the things that, you know, I've been trying to work on for the last couple of years is updating those pictures at EBHS at the high school with some of our varsity teams, as well as at Churchill for our middle school and our freshman teams. We have wonderful trophy cases there, and I love to see our kids represented within those trophy cases. And that's something that I think just enhances, gives everybody a great feeling when you walk into our building and see how, see how welcoming that it is and how, how, how much pride we have in our student athletes. Another highlighted feature here are our official fees. Over the course of time, in especially the last three to four years, there has been an official shortage. So some of those fees have increased greatly over these last few years. So we have budgeted accordingly, and we're trying to stay on top of that part of it. We're fortunate in that we get to play longer in our season simply because our teams have had success, not only in the state but in the GMC. So that adds more into our budget for our officials. So we're very fortunate in that regard. Our outside facilities, our venues such as our cheer venue, our bowling alleys that we use, our golf courses. We've seen significant increases with those, with that part of our budget as well. And we've done a very good job, I think, in communicating with those facilities and kind of knowing what's coming down the pikes. We've been able to really, I don't know, get ahead of it. And we've done a good job in my office of doing that. So I'm very happy about that part and that we give our athletes that opportunity to use those outside facilities to be able to compete. We've seen great participation numbers over the course of the last couple of years. It's something I take a lot of pride in. I try to get a lot of our messaging out for our families and for our student athletes to get involved, be a part of something, you know, be around your teammates, be around your friends, be around kids that you grew up with that are in your classes that you know for, you know, years and years and years. That's the great thing about high school athletics is that you get to share those moments with some of your closest friends and peers that you know your entire life. So our big booster club, our Booster Club has done a wonderful job of supporting. They had a, we, we meet every summer and we talk, you know, a few times throughout the year. And our Booster Clubs have been so supportive of our kids and of our teams. It's another thing that I think with the communication that we have with them, I take a lot of pride in that, you know, we're able to talk and we're able to get feedback from our parents. And they do a great job supporting our. our parents and they do a great job supporting our athletics during the fall, the winter, and the spring seasons. One other point too is our school physician. We're in the process of a new school physician and we've had to budget, just take into account what the fees that are going to increase are. And we've done that, we've, we've had a, a, a school physician that we've used here in the past and he's done a wonderful job for us and now we're moving on and we've budgeted accordingly for the new school physician that will have an opportunity to work with us. A next bulleted point is our athletic trainers, supplies, and equipment. We have a full-time trainer and a part-time trainer here and we're very fortunate to have them. They're very good at what they do and they're in need of more supplies. And I, I think too, it kind of goes hand in hand with some of the participation numbers that we've seen increase. So we need more supplies for our athletic trainers to tend to our athletes that are injured, rehab them, and get them back onto the field. So that's something that, you know, our trainers have communicated with me and we've done a good job of working together to increase, try to increase these funds, you know, to give our athletes the, every opportunity to get back onto the field. Next would be our transportation. We've, my, my office and the transportation office, I think over the course of the last three years, we've really worked very hard to communicate, work together, and give our kids every opportunity to get to and from games. Our Churchill shuttles have increased and as I said, some of our games have increased as well. So being able to provide that transportation and communicating with our transportation department, they've worked very hard to, to do this with us and we've really, we really have a very good working relationship and we've done a good job of budgeting to get those buses for our children to get to our games. And lastly, one of the things I take a little pride in is the uniform replacement chart. We had an opportunity to increase some of those funds over the course of time, but yet we're able to provide new uniforms for every level of sport that we have here, from the middle school right up through the varsity. I think that is a great thing. That is not done everywhere and it's a special thing that we have here in place. Our kids, our parents, our coaches really appreciate that. And then putting together that uniform rotation chart has been great. And one of the things I've always felt as a coach and, and, and a person has athletics, when you look good, you play good. And I've always believed that, so that's part of, that's part of the uniform replacement. So I chose these things to highlight just simply because they're some of the, the biggest talking points that we have in our athletic office and I wanted to share those with you tonight. So thank you very much for that. And if there's any questions, please.
Thank you, and I have to tell you that I would say that you're strategic to make sure that our kids are winning before you come, but you know what? I'm seeing a pattern. They're just that good.
Trying.
You did it last year too, so good job.
Yes, thank you.
Mrs. Becker.
Hi.
Thanks so much for that.
So members of the Finance Committee always have the pleasure of hearing the budget, budget reports twice. We get to preview them and take a slightly deeper dive and then we get to, to bring that information to the full board when we have our budget discussions. But one thing that, I don't think we talked about the other night, but I think that it's, it's, it's important to remember that there are certain fixed costs, my, sorry, my Long Island accent, costs, that are gonna come into play in any budget. But with something like this, there are the things that you cannot possibly predict. For instance, how far any given team is going to go, right? In, in the red division, the GMCs, states, each time they go and we want them to go all the way.
Of course.
But each time, there's another tournament, which means more official fees, which means more transportation. So there are certain things that we need to be prepared and it's for a very good thing, very good reason to be flexible about. So I appreciate the fact that I think that you're very cognizant of that and, you know, work with Bernie to make sure that all our teams can go as far as, as, as they're able to. Right? And that the, the fees are adjusted accordingly. Also about the, the uniform rotation system that, we had put this in, in play years ago because it was just so completely haphazard. To the best of my recollection, we also had one for equipment. We had set a rotation for equipment replacement because we were finding that that was also a bit lopsided. Now, obviously, sometimes when you think of equipment for any given team, it can range from a soccer ball to more extensive equipment for another team. Do we still have a kind of rotation in place for where, replacing wear and tear on our equipment?
We do. Yeah, we have set numbers on our budget every year for it. A lot of it's based on wants and needs, a lot of safety equipment as well that we take into account. So, you know, again, the input from our coaches is, is a great help in, in what those needs are to be able to run our programs.
You and your coaches do a fantastic job.
Thank you.
And as we talked about in finance, it's, it's not just that our kids win tournaments. It's how they conduct themselves on the field. It's the recognition we get for their sportsmanship and the recognition they get and support they get for being student athletes. So you and your, your entire staff and team just do a fantastic job with that.
Thank you. We get, we have many compliments throughout the year, throughout our seasons about the character of our kids and that starts from our coaching staffs. I think they lead by example and it just trickles down to the rest of our student athletes. And, you know, that's really from our varsity sports all the way down to our middle school athletic team. So we take a lot of pride in that. We talk about it quite often in our meetings and it's, you know, it's a, it's a big talking point there. So thank you for recognizing that.
Mr. Dunn?
So Frank, thank you very much for the budget and presentation. I have two questions. So number one, so in your budget, school physician, police, and security combined is about twenty thousand dollars. It's five percent of your entire budget. Can you elaborate how this small amount of budget, our school physician can help? We need to, our athlete when they compete?
So our, our school physician is in charge of signing off on our physicals and reading through our kids' physicals as we, as they hand them in throughout every sports season. That's his, that's the biggest job of our school physician for athletics right now.
So will the school physician travel with our team if our student compete outside East Brunswick?
No, not necessarily. Our school physician usually is at home football games. It's, it's a requirement throughout the state, but not for any of our other, other athletic teams.
Okay, so you use very small, small amount of money to help our student, to secure our students' healthy condition and their games? Thank you for that. And second, so you spend up one third of the entire budget for the transportation? So it's one third of your entire budget? So can you elaborate how this money be spent? Are, if you use our own school bus or outside school bus, I, how are you going to pay them?
So we do use our own school buses. We get, we use two per day and then our Churchill shuttles as well. And then we have to outsource anything else that we would need to get our teams from that our school buses wouldn't be able to cover those rides.
So the payment to our own bus and outside contract bus, the same?
It is different. The contracted bus is usually a more expensive bus and transportation and I, we communicate a lot about some of the pricing that we get and we sometimes turn away some of the expensive, more expensive trips to find a cheaper trip. So we try to be fiscally responsible in that regard.
If I can elaborate on that a little bit, please. So the athletic budget includes the transportation costs for contracted services. That is not the cost for the transportation services provided by our own fleet. That is contained within the transportation budget.
Okay, thank you very much for addition. Okay, so by your experience, did any, did the transportation cause any problem preventing our student from traveling outside or longer distance for the, for the competition?
It is not. I think our transportation department has done a wonderful job accommodating and working together and communicating with my office to be, to be sure that we have our buses in place to get our kids to those functions.
Okay, thank you. That's all my concerns. Thank you very much, okay.
Heather, show your hand.
Yeah, I, oops, sorry. I had questions at the committee meeting the other night. I just had one comment I wanted to make. When I was looking at the budget, I was seeing that it's not just the security costs for our security and for the township police department to be here at our home athletic events, but that we also take security with us to some events away. And I know I spend a lot of time at our athletic events, but I know that last year, I think, was the first time I saw that en masse and I just wanted to compliment that because other districts, you know, when we travel, some, some schools don't even have security at the events. It's visible. And it is a great comfort as a parent to see that for many events, our security is able to go with our teams. Sometimes they are the only security present and I just think it was a wonderful addition to the, I think, was last year the first year of that?
I think in the past, we've, we've had security go to some of our away events. We, we've kind of, we, we pick and choose what those events are depending upon the, the nature of the game.
The nature of the game.
We've increased the visibility.
I was gonna say, I note, last year, I spent a lot of time, and last year was visibly an increase and many parents commented on it. And I would just say that the community on the whole is grateful for that increased presence when we take the kids on the road.
Thank you for recognizing that. We, my office with our security team at the high school, we also, you know, we meet once a week just to make sure that we have coverage for these events and we pick and choose those events that we may send security to on the road. So.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Barbara?
Thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you.
And we recently added a lot of middle school sports that we didn't have previously. Maybe you could tell us the reception that it's receiving. I hear good things and maybe you could share with us about that.
Yeah, so our, our middle school sports at Churchill really, they're the foundation and the feeder programs for our high school athletic teams. We take a lot of pride in the fact that we're able to teach, you know, the, the stepping stones for, you know, what, what our, what our high school athletic teams are like. And the fact that we have those middle school teams to be able to compete against some of the other teams in the GMC at the middle school level is a great thing for us and it keeps more kids, you know, involved in the activities and, you know, doing things after school and, you know, being an active part of our community at the school.
And do you see more kids involved, you know, being at a younger age?
Oh, yes.
And that brings more folks through the pipeline up to the high school?
Definitely so. Our numbers, you know, we've, as we've talked about, those participation numbers increasing, the middle school numbers really have been one that has really gone very high. So we're happy about that.
Okay, thank you so much, Frank.
Thanks. Appreciate you having me tonight.
Thank you. Lastly, for this evening, we have Louise Zultana LaRocco, who will talk about the Special Education Budget.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to all of you and talk about our neurodivergent population and some of our favorite students throughout the district. So the Special Education Budget is built on a couple of different pieces. The first thing that we look at is federal code, then we look at state code, and we prioritize what's called LRE, the least restrictive environment for our students. And that looks different for every child. So it is a big part of the Child Study Team's process to ensure that we're looking at the child holistically, to see how we can meet their needs, but also have them be amongst the general population. We also look at the academic placement. We work closely with the Academics Department, Student Services Department for school counseling and for student assistant counselors to provide services for our, for our children, whether that be in groups with general education students or, you know, with our, in our Child Study Team. And then every year, we assess the effectiveness of our programs. We look at trends. We look at concerns that may be coming up through the pipeline and we meet with all Child Study Team members to transition and we use that in programming for the following year. We continue to give that information to the Finance Department, to Academics Department, to the buildings, so that we can start to predict what the needs would be for the following year. It's a little bit of how we kind of come together to figure out what the needs are in special education. Thank you. So there are many different types of services that we provide. We are very fortunate to have a board that has been supportive over the years to ensure that we are able to meet our, our children's needs. It starts with the evaluation process. So if you look at evaluations for student needs, we provide speech, language, occupational therapy, physical therapy, augmentative evaluations to provide our students a voice, psychiatric, neurological, educational, neuroeducational, social. There are a lot of different evaluations that are looked at. It is decided through the Child Study Team and at the IAP meeting with the parent to see what evaluations are needed to ensure we're looking at all the needs of the child. And then from there, we would figure out what programming they need. Programming can look very different. We have in-class resource models where there's two teachers in a classroom. We have resource room pullout. We have self-contained classrooms. And then we have different types of push-in models where we can have a class within a class. So throughout the district, there's many different types of programs and we really cater those programs to student need and communicate that to the Business Office and Academics to ensure that we are creating a program for all of our students. And there's more out there. We have testing kits, support services, teacher of the visually impaired and of the deaf. Then we have FM units. We have augmentative devices. So anything really a child would need, we would look at how to provide them equal access to East Brunswick education. So over the past few years, we have seen difference in trends in out-of-district students. So this is one of our more costly areas when it comes to special education. If you look back at 2010, we had ninety-three students who were out of district and over the years, we had built capacity within, within East Brunswick to maintain more of our students. But in education, the pendulum swings and things kind of shift back and forth and we're starting to see a little bit of a slight increase in the need to place students out of district. A student would go out of district that has truly intensive needs that we can't meet. So that may look like a medical need or an intense behavioral or social emotional therapeutic need. And then we work together with the Child Study Teams to place them in a location that will meet their needs through their IAP. And we always look at them. So it's not, there's not sent out of district and that's the end of it. We often visit them throughout the year about three times and then there's an annual overview, always looking to see if we can bring them back in. One of the things that is complicated about an out-of-district placement is that we don't have the ability to predict how much it is going to cost all of the time because they do change their prices, which makes it hard for the Business Office to give exactly what our needs are for an out-of-district placement. Another piece of an out-of-district placement that might be tricky are students that move in. So if in their IAP from another district, it comes in that they are an out-of-district student, we have thirty days, but that's also a lot of transitioning for a little guy. So there's a lot of thought that goes into deciding whether or not they're gonna come back in district and whether or not we have the room at the time. It's quite a complex process. We do use, utilize the, my wonderful supervisors and the Child Study Team to carefully organize how and who and what we need to do to ensure that we're meeting all of our students' needs. And then finally, this is an overview. So you can see the out-of-district tuition is probably the, well, is the most cost for the special education services. We offer speech, occupational therapy, physical therapy to our students that need it. We also provide counseling for our students, specialized transportation program supplies, improvement of curriculum. There's a lot that goes into creating programming individualized for students that need it. But I have a really strong team. I have a lot of support from all of you. This Special Education Parents Advisory Group has grown and has been a wonderful support to the Special Education Department. So that's kind of everything in a nutshell. I could probably stay up here and speak for a couple more hours, but I'll save you that. But if you have any questions, please let me know.
Mrs. Becker?
This is a question, a comment. Jeff, I think you, you brought this up at the Finance Meeting, that you mentioned about the variable of the cost of a private school for out-of-district placement. So we often talk about things like caps and there's a cap for everything, right? There's a cap on this and the state puts a cap on this and the state puts a cap on that. One thing that is not capped in this state is, right? I think that's what we were talking about, that there's no cap, formal state cap, on private school tuition. cap, on private school tuition. They can literally raise the tuition every single year, whatever they want.
And throughout the year.
And throughout the year. And another thing that was brought up in finance, I'll take credit for saying this one, that raising, one school raising the prices might red-flag other private schools in the state to say, "Oh, we'll raise ours." So, it's, we're really, it's horrible to put a price tag on education for any child, but the fact that they are allowed to increase their tuition is mind-boggling.
We agree.
Oh, true. Mr. Winston?
I can't compliment you enough on what you do. And with that, though, I do know that your department, more than anybody else or any other budget presentation, is a moving target. And if we've learned anything, is that you do your job so well that East Brunswick has become 20% special needs to some degree, although not necessarily to the 57 or so out of district. However, yeah, you know, my background's in numbers, so I'm sitting there trying to do the probability and statistic, and it does look like you'll probably see a two to four student increase in that number based on redevelopment coming in. I expect to see you back here probably in September after move-in season in some of the new developments that have gone on around town. So, I guess my comment is, don't hesitate to come back out of anything that would be a detriment to what you've built. You have a hard job, and you do it extremely well.
I have a really good team. So, the teachers, the staff, they're phenomenal.
I get it.
I'm just supporting a fabulous team.
And that is the sign of a true leader, and I appreciate those comments more than you know. So, come back when you need us, because I think you're going to. This budget, I don't think, is the one we're going to see ultimately. So, I think your needs are going to be higher.
Yeah, we'll see.
Yeah.
Thank you for the presentation, and I love, to Mr. Winston's point, the sign of a true leader. Mr. Malta, the same thing, talking about his team. Dr. Bowley as well. So, that's awesome. Just a question on these evaluations. It's an extensive list. Do we, are most of those, are we able to administer most of those in-house, or are we outsourcing a lot of those?
So, the bilingual evaluations, for the most part, are outsourced to the commission. It's difficult to find people who speak all of the wonderful languages that are spoken in East Brunswick, so a lot of those do go out because we do want to test our students in their first language. As long as we're, you know, fully staffed, so right now, we have a couple of people having babies, you know, that are out, so we may need to go out for a psychological or, you know, neuros are always out to our doctors. But, we try to keep it within the house as much as possible because it helps with, who knows the student? You can reach out to the teachers from the prior year, see out to the administrators, school counselors. There's a lot more conversation that can be had, and the evaluation is more thorough when you go out, like with most things. You know, we learn that with busing, too. Like, when you go out, it's just not the same quality as from within.
So, enough good thing has been said. Thank you very much for your wonderful job. So, my comment is, when I look at the numbers, out-of-school tuition by every, every student is close to $80,000 per student tuition only. If we factor in the transportation, the nerves, so one single student will cut easily more than $100,000. So, is there any way we can build the in-house capacity to keep students inside the East Brunswick Public School? That will benefit students a lot, not just financially to the board. If we keep students inside our public school, there will be less transportation time, and the student will be happier because they know they'll stay with East Brunswick, not be bused to other district or other school. So, is there any way we can explore the possibility to keep as many students inside our school district? Just my comment. I mean, I-
Bernie and I are looking at each other because this is a conversation that we have multiple times a year. There is a, you know, a balance between looking at, you know, what students to bring back in, how we can meet their need, not just the cost, but also the size of the building is taken into consideration. We have students that, it could be very overwhelming, the size of Hammerhill Churchill or the high school, and they really do maybe need intensive sensory supports that we're not going to find in the 1950s high school. So, there's a lot that goes into really creating the right program for each student. However, you have helped. So, over the years, bringing in therapeutic supports, adding additional case managers, adding additional teachers, adding the additional speech therapists and the things that you have, you have helped keep students in district. You know, I don't want to keep going back to COVID, but COVID certainly impacted a lot of our students when it comes to related services, occupational therapy, speech. They needed a little bit more. Academically, we're seeing an increase in students that need more individualized instruction, and we're just trying to kind of keep up with that. And then, we also do have a significant number of people who moved to East Brunswick for our programs. So, but by what you've been doing, you have been helping. So, it's not, it's just like, you know, just the ever-moving target that we continue to look at as time goes on.
I know you guys are dealing with very challenging situation. Legally, we have to help. Financially, you don't have any bargaining power. You don't have, we don't have any pricing power. And additionally, because you guys are doing so good a job, we are attracting more students come to our school district. That's why the percentage of our students with IEP is going up almost every year. But hopefully, in your new high school, we can have some more space for those special needs students. We can keep more students inside our school district. Thank you again.
Mrs. Becker?
LeWu, you brought up a really good point, and I know that you know this, but some of the new board members may not know it and people watching. This board, I'm very proud to say, years ago, I'd say well over a decade ago, made a very conscious decision to bring, to keep as many special needs children in district. And again, as you said, and as LeWu said, not just because of the cost, because of the least restrictive environment, because we felt it was the best thing for the children to be part of the community, to go to schools with their neighbors. And we made a very conscious decision to spend resources on the staff, on the curriculum, on any special technology or curriculum items, augmentative devices, so that we could have more in-district programs. Our autistic program is a prime example of that. Prior to our commitment to resources and staff, we were sending so many children out of district for that, and I'm really, we all are, so proud of the program that was created in-house through the dedication of the staff and the teams and also the parents and children. I think they play so much a part in ownership of these in-house programs. The thing is, sometimes, there'll be children with such specific needs that we just, we can't address it here. And by the thorough and efficient law of the state, we must provide the most optimal education for these kids, and we can't do it here. That's when we turn to the out-of-district. So, I think that your point is so well-taken, LeWu, in the sense that we should always continue it, but I just wanted to provide a sense of history, that historically, this board has really, really done that, and I've always been very proud of us.
Did you have something on there?
Yeah, just real quick. I know that tonight in it Finance Committee, the big blue section has been touched on a number of times tonight, and it was in finance as well, and that's the out-of-district placement tuition. We had some conversation at finance, and of course, it leaves the question, what's being done? The costs continue to go up, but what's being done? And I mentioned to the Finance Committee that as superintendents in Middlesex County, we've been advocating for, I went back and looked at my notes, well over seven years now, about the cost, the uncontrolled cost of out-of-district placements and legislative support or legislative relief for that. I was able to confirm after the Finance Committee that this is at the governor's desk right now and is being considered as part of the school aid in the budget. I do not know what that means in terms of real dollars, but I was able to confirm that this is actually in budget discussions right now.
I'm glad to hear that. Wow.
Thank you so much.
All right, leading us to our Board of Education. May I please have a motion for the items under Board of Education? And you'll notice we have the 2023-2024 calendar revision as well as the 2024-2025 calendar addendum. Moved by Mrs. Becker.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Herrick. Is there any discussion? Mr. Winston?
On the calendar year 2324, I see what's been added, reading it, additional days are needed for emergency closing. Schools will be closed on April 24th and April 23rd in that order. April, now, last year, I was very proud of this board to approve the many holidays that they did. If I recall correctly, we had a lineup of many Muslim community members who were asking about Eid, and the reason why they were asking was because the importance of Eid was bringing family together for tradition, and it's a, it's an opportunity for these families to celebrate together. April 23rd is the second Seder of Passover. I don't know why we would include that for the same reasons that we approved Eid. I don't think that should be one of the default days. The 24th is still Passover, but it's not the first and second Seder, or the 22nd, 23rd, and I don't like the idea of having that holiday, which is a very big holiday, a very important holiday for the Jewish religion, for the 23rd to be handled. So, I do object to that particular date, and I just want to go on record as stating that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. This is a voice vote, I believe, correct?
Yes.
All in favor?
I-
Opposed? Oh.
I have an abstention for-
For the minute.
Do you?
Same, same minute, February 1st.
Okay. Opposed?
Opposed to the calendar.
Okay.
Not, I'm abstaining from one, opposed to the calendar.
Okay. Okay. Motion carries, leading us to two items under Community Programs. Don't all motion at once?
I don't move.
I'm sorry, just to clarify.
Approved number three.
Approved number- Thank you.
Yeah, I knew you were going, I was like-
I just wanted to clarify.
Number two only, number two only.
So, move down some.
Heather Vicki for the, for Community Programs. Is there any discussion? Yes, Barbara.
I just wanted to compliment on Community Programs, you know, in our package, there's a list of all the different enrichment programs that they offer and the range of what is offered, the art, the coding, the free print, I mean, the breadth, and then the second package goes into, you know, languages, mini med school, I think, so compliments to the district and to Gilbert and her team because they really go above and beyond to provide opportunities for our students. They don't have to travel somewhere else to go for some of these things. So, thank you for that.
And you're not, you're kind of humble there, but I have to tell you, when you were the Community Programs Chair, a lot of these you brought to that committee. So-
I made a suggestion, but she did, she-
She did, she did, but I, as long as you're giving some kudos out there.
And the coding-
You brought some great stuff.
I'm thrilled that Hammerhill were doing that. Invite me to any of those events.
Yeah.
You are welcome to any of those, so just let us know. Any board members, those type of things, let us know. Glad to have you.
No, thank you. And I mean, honestly, some of these coding classes outside of our district are three times twice. So, not that they don't do a great job, but I feel we do a very good job and provides access to students who might not otherwise have access to that STEM background outside of school. So, hopefully, they're reset and get good careers.
Great job. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, leading us to Curriculum and Instruction. We have three items this evening. Moved by Mrs. Becker.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Herrick. Is there any discussion?
I do.
Yes, Mrs. Gloss, sorry.
I just wanted to say, I appreciate item number two on the budget for a costume designer to work with the director and the students. Having watched many, many high school performances be put together, it's an intensive amount of work, and I feel like students never actually go home, and the advisors even more so. So, to bring in expertise in that area, and the amount is not as high as the hours that go in, I am sure, but I just appreciate that we bring these experts in for them on top of the talent that we have in-house as well, because to put on the plays and the musicals is such a huge endeavor, and our students do a phenomenal job, and I'm glad we're able to support them this way.
They do. Good point. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Is there anything that needs separating out for our 10 items this evening on financial services? Okay, if not, then I'm going to ask for a motion on items one through 10. Moved by Mrs. Becker. Of course you can. Second by Mrs. Gloss, and I will let Mr. Cummings start the discussion.
Did I jump the gun a little bit?
That's okay. Perfect timing.
Still getting comfortable. Thank you. I just wanted to give a quick shout-out to the East Brunswick Education Foundation for the work they did. And number three and here with the Read Across America Week, I understand that these are grant opportunities that they offer to teachers and to all the schools across the district, and I just think it's just such an awesome opportunity for the students, the teachers, and the school communities as a whole to take advantage of this. So, I'm just really enthused about seeing that. Thank you.
You do a great job. Great point. Is there any other discussion? Then, I'm going to ask the secretary to please call the roll.
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Cummings.
Yes.
Ms. Gloss.
Yes.
Mrs. Herrick.
Yes.
Mr. Hahn.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Lacks.
Yes. Motion carries, leading us to our two items this evening on Human Resources.
I will.
Moved by Mrs. Becker.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Gloss. Is there any discussion? This again is a roll call vote. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Cummings.
Yes.
Ms. Gloss.
Yes.
Mrs. Herrick.
Yes.
Mr. Hahn.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Lacks.
Yes. Motion carries. We've got one item this evening for Shaft Development. Moved by Mrs. Becker.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Herrick. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have seven items this evening for Student Services. Moved by Mrs. Becker. Second by Mr. Cummings. Is there any discussion? Yes.
I reviewed the monthly school reports section in here, the fire drills, the evacuation drills. I mean, gosh, those are just so important, and I just want to commend all of the people who are, you know, continuing to stay in front of that and really, you know, encourage that ongoing behavior. There's, it's just, it's so vital to the well-being and, you know, the health of each district, each, all the students getting acclimated to this process, God forbid it should ever be needed. So, I just wanted to thank everybody for their effort there.
Dr. Figaro, on your team. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Cummings. The principals really do a fantastic job of keeping on schedule. We schedule through my office, but they do a fantastic job. The staff, you know, from the teachers to everyone, counselors, nurses, all the staff, really do a nice job of really making it important for the students to learn how important those drills are. So, thank you for noticing that. Thank you.
And as a parent, too, I always appreciate getting the emails that, you know, this occurred today from the principals, sharing that, you know, because it's important for us to talk about it with our kids when they come home and make sure that we're all aligned. So, thank you.
Dr. Figaro, I want to mention something, just so the board maybe, it's important for them to rehear it. But in the past, you have taken students and staff on the other side of this equation.
Oh, yes. Yes, it's one thing we have done, especially at the secondary levels. We've given students a chance, teachers a chance, to actually see what it's like from the outside. So, not being in the classroom, not. And it's amazing to see how they feel and how, you know, you say, "Wow, there's nobody in the school." It's absolutely quiet, and we can't see anything, and it's dark, and it's, you know, it's really good to see that. And we've come a long way. You know, our security team, as again, the principals, our staff have really, the last dozen years or so, have made our drills even that much more important based on what's happening in the world, and we wanted to make sure that our kids all knew why we do it and that it's not a stressor. You know, there was a lot of questions that, will these drills stress- dozen years or so, have made our drills even that much more important based on what's happening in the world, and we wanted to make sure that our kids all knew why we do it and that it's not a stressor. You know, there was a lot of questions that, will these drills stress out our students? And now, the kids, as a matter of fact, we've actually had situations where we've had substitute teachers that were new and coming into district, and the kids would tell them where they should go during the drill. So, it's really, it's just, and that's at the elementary level. So, it really is wonderful, you know, and again, it's really all about the staff and those who are running the drills every day.
Thank you. Mrs. Becker?
LeWu, I'm so glad you brought that up. That was really great to know about, you know, getting that sense of the other side. And I think you said something really important, that we need these drills to become so commonplace and so, pardon my pun, drilled into their head, that God forbid, in an emergency, they don't even think. They can follow the rule, and it is a testimony to the incredible process, the whole process of security that we've built in this district, such a vital part of it, you and your team, our security officers, the principals, everyone coming together to ensure the safety of our students. But, the drills, it's, it's so important for them to just do them and not even give it any thought. Obey, do it, because in an emergency, you can't stop and think, you've got to do. So, thank you for your part and your whole team's part in keeping our kids safe.
Okay, the secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Cummings.
Yes.
Ms. Gloss.
Yes.
Mrs. Herrick.
Yes.
Mr. Hahn.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Lacks.
Yes, motion carries, leading us to committee reports, information items, and for the good of the cause for the board. And I just wanted to let everyone know, we do have lots of great sporting opportunities, but we now have one more, youth cricket, coming to, you said, coming to East Brunswick, the East Brunswick Cricket Club. They're looking to start that this spring, so if you're looking for information, you can reach out to support@evcricket.org. For all those cricket-inspired. Okay. Well, then, seeing as we've got no need for an additional closed session, I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
One second.